For this evening's meeting, let us turn our Bibles to Genesis chapter thirty-five.
This evening's meeting, we have read the 35th verse of Isaiah.
And let's read verse eleven.
We have read the 35th verse of Isaiah.
Let's read verse eleven together.
We have read the 35th verse of Isaiah.
So, this particular blessing of God is given to Jacob.
This blessing is given to Jacob.
Shall we read together please?
We have read the 35th verse of Isaiah.
Also, God said to him, "I am God Almighty, be fruitful and multiply; a nation accompanied by nations shall proceed from you, and kings shall come from your body." Shall we pray? Precious Lord, once again, we thank you for these days of anniversary meetings, when we could come around thy precious word, to hear thy voice, and Lord, be prepared to live a fruitful life.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day. We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
There is not a single person here who doesn't desire to live a fruitful life, and a life that is, that will multiply and bring blessing to others.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
All our hearts desire such a life.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
We all long to be fruitful to you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
We all long to be a blessing to many.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But Lord, we have to confess that we are not so.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So have mercy upon us.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Once again, through thy precious word and thy Holy Spirit, thou may Lord teach us as well as help us to be confirmed to those truths that will make us fruitful.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And when thou would speak those truths to us, give us a heart to receive them.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And respond to them.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And apply it in our whole lives.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And see our lives being changed into a fruitful life.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Your life, your word has a transforming power.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Your word has changing power.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
It can, it can change a cursed life into a blessed life.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Your word can change a barren life into a fruitful life.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So have mercy upon us.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So Lord, we long, even before your return, each of us to live a fruitful life, for your kingdom, for your name, and for the blessing of many.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
To this end, thou may speak to our hearts through thy blessed word and through thy Holy Spirit.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Lord, we who stand before thy people, we are not better than any of your people.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Lord, we too confess that we need to become more fruitful.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So speak to our hearts also.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Grant us the attendance both to give thy word and to translate according to your promise in Matthew ten twenty.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Thou have promised, it's not thee that speaketh, but the spirit of my Father that speaketh in thee.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Lord, we firmly believe in your promise.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
We know that thou art eager and thou art faithful to fulfill your promise.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
We confess again that the words that you speak alone can minister spirit and life to us.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So our cry and our plea to you is that every word may proceed from your mouth.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And according to Acts chapter sixteen and verse fourteen, give us an open heart like Lydia to give heed to the words of, as she gave to the words of Paul.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
We rebuke and bind every power of darkness that may hinder us to be blessed by thy precious word in the mighty name of the Lord Jesus Christ.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
We thank you for hearing our prayer.
We thank you for the will eventually answer our prayer and speak to us as we pray this prayer with thanksgiving and praise,
worship and adoration of hearts, in the precious name of a Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day. We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Amen. In Genesis chapter thirty-five and verse eleven, we see God appearing to Jacob and uttering the same benediction or blessing saying, "I am God Almighty, be fruitful and multiply."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And when we see the beginning of Jacob's life,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Nobody could believe that his life can become fruitful or can be a blessing to many.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So we know very well, the name Jacob means a schemer.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Or a supplanter, or a liar, or a deceiver, and so many other synonyms.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Such a person was Jacob.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He could deceive his own brother, elder brother.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He could deceive his own father also.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Nobody who came in his way, there was nobody whom he couldn't deceive who came across his way.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And by deception, he could grab anything he wanted.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So that was his unique feature.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Totally contrary to the character of God.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
See, there are two things.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
One is the deceiver.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And the second is the deceived.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Who is more terrible?
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
The deceiver or the deceived?
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
The deceiver.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Satan is a deceiver.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And we are all deceived people.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So he had the character of the devil itself.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He went on deceiving people.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He was, of course, he was deceiving people for spiritual things also.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
People are deceiving for worldly things, temporal things, and those things that are perishing.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But somehow, we don't know, we don't understand, he had a great affinity for spiritual things.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And he had knowledge of spiritual things also.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
How valuable those things are.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He knew that birthright of a child, or birthright of his descendants was a very precious thing for him.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
It was very valuable for him.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
It will bring all the blessings of his ancestors.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That knowledge Esau did not have.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And so he had acquired knowledge of all spiritual things also.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And he had an affinity for all these things. He had an affinity or affection for these things.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And, but the way he tried to get them,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Was the way of the devil.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
By using deception.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So whereas our brother was coming very hungry after, after days of hunting,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He had caught nothing.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Just before, on the path, he was cooking, Jacob was cooking.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Nice savory food he was cooking.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And he knew the weakness of his brother also.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He knew that he is very crazy about food.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And the moment he shows some food, he will sell anything.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
There are so many people like that.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
You can slowly deceive them by giving them some food also.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And what happened?
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
It happened so.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So that flavor was coming to the nostrils of Esau.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That man was going the other side, he though was drawn by this flavor and came to Jacob.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Straight away, he came to Jacob.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And he said, "I want this food."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"I am very hungry."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"I cannot wait for any more time, I have to go home and cook and all that stuff is not possible."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So give me that food.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And immediately, this man begins to bargain.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"I want something from you."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"Then I will give you this one."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Like that, many people bargain.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And when they bargain, we must be very, very careful when people are bargaining.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
What was he demanding?
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He was demanding the spiritual birthright.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
From Esau.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
If you give me the birthright,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Then I will give you this morsel of food.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And Esau said, "Yes, yes, what's the use of that birthright? Now give me food."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So in those days, it was not needed in writing.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
If you give a promise, that's all, it is held.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
God will consider it as a promise.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Esau cannot go back on it.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Immediately, the birthright is transferred to Jacob.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So he had received the birthright.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So we see, when people are bargaining, we must find out what they are bargaining about.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
The king of Sodom came to Abraham.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
After that great victory that Abraham had,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He defeated the four kings who had conquered the five kings.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Our three hundred eighteen men,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Abraham had fought against those four great kings.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Who had fought against the king of Sodom and Gomara and saw the other, another five kings and their armies,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And taken captive the king of Sodom as well as Lot and all, all that belonged to him.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Now Abraham takes his three hundred eighteen servants. Abraham takes his three hundred eighteen servants.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Fights against these kings.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And has victory over them.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And everything, whatever they lost, all these five kings lost, and what Lot lost, everything has been recovered.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
The king of Sodom came and took all his spoil.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And then he comes to Abraham.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
See, you take all this spoil.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
I am only asking one thing.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Give me those three hundred eighteen trained servants.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
What is that to all this spoil? So much of gold and silver and so many things are there.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Abraham was a spiritual man.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He knew that this bargain would make him literally spiritually poor.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
They were not ordinary servants.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
They were trained to trust in the Lord.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
They were men of prayer.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Just like we see Eliezer who was praying for Rebecca, for a bride, for Isaac.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Men who feared God.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Men who trusted God.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Men who knew how to pray to God.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That was a training, more than arms training.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He had trained them spiritually.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That is why they started off with Abraham.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
They knew very well.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
They had to face four kings and their big armies.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
How is it possible?
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
If it was me, I would like to run away from there.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But they had enough faith in their hearts.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
With our God, we can conquer these people.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And they had almost a faith of Abraham also.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That much of faith they had put inside these three hundred eighteen servants.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And they knew that they were doing God's will and God was with them.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So the king of Sodom said,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"I can see three hundred eighteen Abrahams here."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Three hundred eighteen Abrahams.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
If they have been able to conquer four kings and their armies,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Who fought against five kings and their armies,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And conquered them,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"How many kings, how many armies with these three hundred eighteen servants, I will be able to conquer."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And get so much of spoil for me.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"I will go for fighting every day."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Everywhere, with these three hundred eighteen servants.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And I'll accumulate so much of spoil, I'm going, giving only little to Abraham now.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So that idea was there in his mind.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So he was bargaining.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And Abraham said, "Nothing doing."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"I don't want even a lace of your shoes."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
God is my provider.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"I lift up my hands unto the Lord who has created the heavens and the earth."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
My God is the possessor of the heavens and the earth.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"I will not stretch my hands to you."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Only to God.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That much of faith Abraham had and the servants holds the hand.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So he wouldn't fall for this bargain.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He was not attracted by all the spoil of Sodom and Gomara.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But we see Esau on the opposite.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
One morsel of food,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He sold his birthright.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
See, how many believers are like that?
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Satan comes and deceives us.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Today, in your workplace,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
If you bunk, if you, if you know, if you bunk Sunday worship service,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Ten times more, they are giving OT, overtime.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And our believers run for that overtime.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Ten times more they are giving.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Whole week, if I earn also,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
It's not that much.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So normally, overtime is about two, three times more than your regular salary.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And moreover, what these people do, Satan does, using these employers,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
If you come and do OT on Sunday, whole week in the evenings, we will give you OT.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So many of the believers, they go whole week, twenty-four bar seven, they are working.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
They are selling their birthright.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
They don't understand what they are losing.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So Esau lost his birthright.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And after that, only he understood.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That along with the birthright is the blessing of God.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Because he lost the birthright,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He was not given his father's blessing.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
God did not allow that.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Everything, every birthright, everything that you, every spiritual thing is linked with a blessing of God.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
You cannot separate them.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Any spiritual attitude is linked with some blessing.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And if you think of separating them, it's not possible.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So on that day, Esau learned that lesson.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Somehow by deception, Jacob came and took away the father's blessing also.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And then Esau is coming there.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
God alone, times of everything.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
God loves everything.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Therefore, this man goes late.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
By the time Isaac has given the blessing.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Then Esau is crying and weeping and asking his father to give the blessing.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He says, "I'm very sorry, I'm very sorry."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He was feeling very sorry before God for having sold his birthright.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But it was too late.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So remember, when you are bargaining, you are losing something.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Whatever be the cost.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
However you, however advantageous things may be.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
However you may accumulate from this world.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Do not compromise spiritual things.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Do not compromise.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And every time you stand for the things of God,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Remember, a blessing is attached to it.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Which will be much more than what the world can give you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
What the king of Sodom could give you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
It will be much more than that.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That is why God's people must never be compromisers.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Never be a compromiser.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
You are only losing.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
God has got enough immense blessing meant for you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
See, on the last day,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
When we go to heaven and meet the Lord,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He will go and show us one place.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
All the blessings are stored there.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And he will tell you personally,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
My son, my daughter,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
All these blessings,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Were meant for you only.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"I have prepared it all even in eternity for you."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But the sad thing is,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
You never came to the enjoyment of all these things.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So many blessings meant for you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But because you've been compromising,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Always been, you always, because you consider spiritual things as invaluable.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And worldly things as valuable.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And for the sake of these worldly things,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
You have been compromising and you've been selling away all these spiritual things.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
You have lost all these blessings.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"I couldn't command these blessings to you."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But all these blessings were meant for you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
On that day, we will regret.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Such great blessings have been meant for me.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
There are so many.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Almost everybody is losing something.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Everybody, every, including me, I am losing something.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
God is not impartial.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Yeah, blessing has been blessed by God so much.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Because he was absolutely uncompromising.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He will never let go of his spiritual things.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Oh, his father and mother came to him to the airport, to the seaport.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
When he came from Canada,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And they said, "My son,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"Come with us."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Father was a very rich man, businessman.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
All the wealth that I have.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"It's for you only."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"You come with me."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And he said, "But I heard that you are a Christian, you become a Christian."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"But be a secret Christian."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Never speak about Christ.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Try to grow your hair also little bit.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And put that thing also there on top.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Like a Sikh, be like, behave like a Sikh.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"And be with us."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"You can worship your God."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But secretly,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He said, "Nothing doing."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"Christ is my breath."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"If I don't preach about him,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"I will die."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He did not compromise.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So mother, mother and father left him also.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Then the father said, "Then we cannot take you with us."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That day, he could have compromised.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"Okay, I can be a secret Christian, at least that my parents are allowing."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
No compromise.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"Okay, they went away."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
You could see them leaving him there, bankrupt, he had no money in the street and they are going away.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And he had to sleep in railway stations.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He had to sleep in the platforms.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And all these things happened in his life.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He lived by tea for many, many days.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That's how he lived.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But never would compromise, never go run to his family.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Compromising Christian.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Satan keeps on bargaining.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He uses many people to bargain.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
"I will give you this, you give up this spiritual thing."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So that is how this Esau was.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And Jacob had deceived him.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And got the birthright.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Got the blessing.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But then what happens? God was, God had chosen Jacob.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That is one wonderful thing about God.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
When we compare Esau and Jacob,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Jacob is in a terrible condition.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Much more terrible than Esau.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
As already said, Esau was only deceived.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But Jacob was a deceiver.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
A hopeless person.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But God picks up such a person.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And makes that person to be fruitful and a blessing to many people.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So when I read that potion, I get hope in my heart.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
What a great hope we have.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Our God can change any person.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
However terrible your background may be.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
However terrible sins you have committed.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
However shameful sins you have committed.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
However abhorrent your life is.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
However wicked you live.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
There is hope for you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
There is hope for you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That's the hope, that's the God of, that's the God of the Bible.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He is a God of hope.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He can change any person.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Any terrible person.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And make their lives fruitful and a blessing.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So you may have come to here very discouraged.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Can God do something out of my life?
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Can he bless my life?
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Can he make my life a blessing?
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
My life is such a terrible life.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Nobody knows that.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
My wife even doesn't know.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
What are the sins that I am involved in?
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
My parents don't know.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
How terribly I am living.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
They know, they will even chase me out of my house.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
There is no hope for me.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Oh, the good news is, God is giving you hope.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
God has not given up hope about you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Even your life, God can change.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And like he said in Genesis chapter thirty-five to Jacob, he said, "Be fruitful, Jacob."
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He multiplied and he blessed him.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He can do that in your life.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But the first thing,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He wants you to acknowledge your sinful life.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That is very important in our lives.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So it took a long time for Jacob to understand that his life was not, was not, though God had chosen him, yet it was not confirmed to that standard where God would bless him and multiply him.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
But look at the patience of God.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
God doesn't give up easily also.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He gives you hope.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And he doesn't give up on you easily.
He doesn't give up on you easily. We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He has enough patience in his life to work in your life.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And change you from glory to glory to become a blessing to many.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
So when you come to this Lord,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
You can come with this confidence.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
That whoever you are,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Whatever be your background,
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
However deeply, deeply you have fallen in life.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
You have hope.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
This God doesn't want to give up on you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Maybe your parents have given up on you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Maybe your relatives have given up on you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Your friends have given up on you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
The society has given up on you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Oh, hopeless fellow.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
Good for our thing.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
God has a plan for you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He has not given up with you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
He still loves you.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
And he has immense power in him.
We have celebrated this day, we have celebrated this day.
To change your life to become a fruitful life.
फलिंच्चन लिगा निन जीतलन मार्च
Become a blessed life.
तन्यकरमैन जीत
And even a blessing to many others.
अनेकुलक आसिरवाद कान
How many people you have changed?
अंत मंदिन अरित्यक मार्च
How many people?
अंत मंद
There is a list of great testimonies.
कर्का गप्पसाक्षंगलीन इन्तोमंदी पट्टी
Terrible men have been changed.
इन्तोमंदी पुरुषलु स्त्रीलु मार्च
And he can do the very same in your own life.
नी व्यक्तिगतम जीतलुकुड़ा अदेच
All, if you want, if you want such a beginning in your life.
नी जीतल अलान्टी आरमु मुंडालुनी कोर्त
If you desire to become fruitful and a blessing to many.
नु फलिंच्यतलक आसिरवादंगा उडालुन
Just simply come to him.
उन्नपाटन
As you are.
उन्नपाट
And confess all that you are to him.
निव एमयुन्ना ओ दी दातंगा अंदिगर
All that you are to him.
नु अंतकुड़ा उप्पु
He knows everything about you.
नी विश्ल अंता निक तेल
But he still has not lost his love for you.
आयन नी पी नीशलायन प्रेम वधिल्को
If those things that you're hiding from your wife, your wife knows she'll lose her love for you.
चुवंडी ओके वेल नु चेसे पन्नु नी भारीक तेलिस्ते नी विश्ल आमे प्रेम पोगोट
If those things that you're being doing and you're indulging in, if your parents come to know, they will lose their love for you.
चुवंडी ओके वेल नु चेसे पन्नु तलिदलिक तेलिस्ते नीमीदुन्ना प्रेम तलिदलिक पोत
But not the Lord Jesus Christ.
आइते ये सुपर अलान्ट
He knows everything about you.
नी गुरुंच आयन कंत
But still he has a plan for you.
आयन नी विश्लो प्रणाल
Still he wants to make you fruitful.
आयन निनु फलिंप
Still he wants to make you a blessing.
निनु आसिरवदिंच्छाल
That's amazing love of God.
अधि आसिरकरमैन देवन
That's the unquenchable love of God.
अधि मार्पाचालनी देवन
And that love was displayed on the cross of Calvary.
आप्रेमे कल्वर सिलुलु बायल्पर्च
Even as he was dying on the center cross.
आयन असिलुलु चनिपोत
He could reach out to a hopeless sinner on the right side.
आयन कुड़िवायपुनुन्ना टुन्नी दईनीमैन टुन्नी आत्कायदीन
A thief on his right side.
तन कुड़िवायपुन दोंगन जूस
There was no more hope for him.
वारिक ये निरिक्षण
That man was going to die for all that he had done and he was going to go to hell.
तानु चेसन पन्नु बेटी चनिपैन नरकानी गला बोत
And everyone had given up hope.
आव व्यक्ति विश्ल प्रत्योक्कलु निरिक्षण पोगोट
Why that man himself had given up hope about his future.
आमनुशुड कुड़ा तन बहुशतुनुकुच्छ निरिक्षण लेन
Oh, nothing else in my life.
नाजीत लिंक एमले
I am condemned now.
नाक सिक्ष
I am worthy to be condemned.
नेन सिक्ष
For all that I've done.
नेन चेसन दान
To hell is it my destiny?
नरकानीके वेलाडमे नाक गम्य
There is no more hope for me.
नाक ए निरिक्षण
Nobody can save me.
यावरुन नान रक्ष
Nobody can help me.
यावरुन नाक साय
That was what is coming in his heart.
अधि तन वृद्यमल वस्त
But such a man.
अलान्टी व्यक्ति
Who gave up, gave up hope for himself.
निरिक्षण कोल्पैन व्यक्ति
And others had given up hope about him.
इतरलिकुड़ा तन विश्ल निरिक्षण
The entire society had given up hope.
समाजमंत निरिक्षण
That's why they put him on the cross.
अंडिके सिलु मी तेस
Lord looked at him and said, "I have hope for you."
आइते प्रभु तनवे बच्चूसी नीक निरिक्षण उन्द
Today itself.
ईदिन
I can change your destiny.
नेन नी गम्यानी मार्च
Today he will come with me to paradise.
नेड निव नातोकुड़ा प्रदेश
What a wonderful transfer took place that day.
अंत अद्भुतमैन रूपांतरण जरिं
This man was almost at the brink of hell.
ई मनुशुड आ नरकप अंचलो उन्न
He has come to the edge.
अंचकोच्छ
He's going to fall down.
ओका सारी
Into the lake of hellfire.
अंदलो बड़ी
Lord transferred him into paradise.
प्रभु तन प्रदेशलो निक
The last moments of his life also.
तन जीतल चेवरीकड़
What a hopeful life, what hope God gave him.
अलान्टी निरिक्षण देवड
Such a wonderful God he is.
अंत अद्भुतमैन
Come to him.
आयन चंत
As you are.
उन्नपाट
Tell him your condition.
नी स्थिति आयन तच
Oh, you don't have to make yourself a saint before coming to him.
नु
You don't have to make yourself a saint before coming to him.
चंतक वच्छे दानिक मुनुपु निनु परिषुद्रिगा चेस्कॉल्स
You come as a sinner.
नु उन्नपाटन पापी
Come with that terrible list of sins.
अलान्टी भयंकरमैन पाप पट्टी
And tell him that.
आयन तच
And confess that to him.
आयन इत्तु उप्पु
Tell your terrible condition to him.
नी भयंकरमैन स्थिति
A crawling of a sinner before him.
आयन इत्तु नु पापी
And tell him, "Lord, have mercy upon me."
प्रवाह नायल लकनिकरुन चुप
That's all he wants.
अंते आइन काल
He will change your life.
नी जीवितान मार्च
He will change your future.
नी भौष्यत्त
He will change your character.
नी गुणसिल
He will change your destiny.
नी गम्य
He will make your cursed life into a blessed life.
नी शापग्रस्त मैन जीवित आशीर्वादंगा मार्च
And he will do it today.
अधि ईदिनमे चेगल
He will do it today.
इप्पु कुरा चेग
Just come to the Lord Jesus Christ.
ये सुप्रवचंतक
Lord have mercy upon me, sinner.
प्रवान आइवल कनिकरुं चूपन
Lord have mercy upon me, sinner.
प्रवान आइवल कनिकरुं
And you will see him immediately working in your life.
आइन वेंटन नीलो पनजेर
He did the very same with the life of that man.
आ व्यक्ति जीविताल उंगुरा देवड़ी
The publican
आ सुंकर
Two men came into the temple.
इतरु देवालाइन कोछ
One was praising himself with the presence of God.
देवनी सनदलो केक्ति तनुतन पोगोड
The Lord absolutely ignored that man.
कदे उड़ा व्यक्ति नी नाकर
That Pharisee was saying
आ परिसेड
Lord, I am such a good man.
प्रवान नेन चाला मंचवन आया
Look at me.
नन चूड
Such a nice person, look at me, I look like an angel.
चूड नेन ओक दोतलाक नपट्टले
I fast twice, twice a week.
वारा नीक रणमालु
I give, I give my tithes.
नात दसंबाग मिस्त
I am not like that adult, that, that publican.
का वाड़ आ सुंकर उन्न आए वाड़
I have not come into adultery.
नेन वेव चाल
Nice, I am like an angel in this world.
कनका ई लोकल दोतलाक नपट्ट
The Lord turned away his face from that Pharisee.
कनका देवड़ी एमो वानी चुसी मोक्कन दिप्प
Because he only knows our hearts.
इधिकंटे आइन कमात्रम एम एम रुद्यमेंट तेल
Ah, God will not be taken up by your outward appearance, outward activities.
नी भास्यसमदमाइना नी रूपंगा नीनु चेसे पनलु आइन चूड
He knows how that Pharisee, how corrupt he is in his heart.
आ परिसेड वधियांतरलिल एंता चेडिपयाद
How proud he is in his heart.
तान रुद्यम एंता गर्वम उंद
And God cannot stand the sight of pride at all.
का गर्विस्तल एद आइन एमात्र निलबड
God is such an nature, he is a very humble God.
देवड़ी स्वाभाविकंगा दीनुड
Therefore he turned away his face.
अंदिचे तान मुकम तिप्प
And he looked at the publican.
इप्पु सुंकर आयप चुस
That man was standing afar off.
आ व्यक्ति चाल दूरंगा निलबड
Afar off from the altar.
ई बल्बीटानीक दूरंगा निलबड
And he was striking his breast.
तान रोमु कोट्ट
And he did not dare to lift up his eyes to heaven.
आकाशवायप कल्लेत्रानी कुरा तानक धैरं
And he was murmuring a small prayer in his heart.
तान रुद्यमल चन्ना प्राद्धन सनुकुं
It was not a loud prayer like the Pharisee.
परिसेड जेसन अटिगा गट्टी
A small prayer in your heart will change your life.
नी चन्ना प्राद्धन नी रुद्यमल चेसे चन्ना प्राद्धन नी जीवितान मार्च
Lord have mercy upon me, a sinner.
प्रवाह पापी नाइन ननु करण
And that drew the attention of the Lord Jesus Christ.
ये सुप्रवेक गमनमो अधि मल्लिंच
It attracted the attention of the Lord Jesus Christ.
ये सुप्रवु नु आ प्राद्धन आकर्ष
What was that man doing?
एम प्राद्धन चड
Standing afar from the altar.
आ बल्बीटानीक दूरंगा उंद
He was saying, "Lord, I'm not worthy to come near you."
प्रवान नेन नी देगरीगराड़ानीक ओक
My sins are so many.
नापापल अन्नी अधिक
They have distanced you and me.
अविन नाकु नीनु दूरंजेस
I'm living afar from you.
नेन चाला दूरंगा उन्न
So many sins are between you and me.
एन्नो पापल नीकु नाक मध्य
Terrible sins, Lord.
भयंकरम आइना पाप
That's why I have to stand very far out.
अंदिके नेन दूरंगा निलबड
And then he did not dare to lift up his eyes to heaven.
तान कल्लु पाइकत्रानी कुरा धैरं
He was bowing down in humility.
एंतो दीनत्तों तो कल
Lord, only those who are pure in heart can look at you.
चुड़ा प्रवाह रुद्यशुद्दीगल वारे नीनु चोड
Blessed are those who are pure in heart, for they shall see God.
रुद्यशुद्दीगल वार धनील वार देवनी चुस
My heart is absolutely corrupt.
प्रवाह नाव रुद्यम एंतो चेडिप
So many vulgar things, so many abominable things are in my heart.
एन्नो चेडु विश्लालु हेम आइन विश्लाल
My heart is fully spoiled.
प्रवाह नाव रुद्यम एंतकन चेडिप
Fully polluted.
प्रवाह पूर्तिका पाड
Fully stained with sin.
एंतो पापुं तन निप
How dare I lift my eyes to heaven?
प्रवान नी वेप एलागन नेन धैरंग कल्लित
Lord have mercy.
नाइलक कनिकरु
And then he was striking his breast.
आरी नी रोमु कोट्ट
What was he saying?
एन जप
Lord, I'm only worthy to be punished by you.
प्रवान नी द्वारा सिक्षण चेप्पड़ दानिक अर्हु
Not once or twice.
ओकसारी रिसाल
He was going on striking his breast.
आरी तिगा रोमु कोट्ट
I need to be punished again and again, again and again.
नेन मरला, मरला सिक्षण चेप्पड़ दानिक पात
That is what I'm worthy of.
दानिके नेन अर्हु
But have mercy upon me.
नाइलक कनिकरु
You took my punishment on the cross.
सिलुल ना सिक्षा बरींच
You are the lamb of God who took all my punishment on the cross.
प्रवान नु देवनी गरपिलु नासिक्षंत नीमी दम
You were stricken for myself.
नापापुल कुर कोट्ट
Therefore
अंदिचे
Have mercy upon me.
नाइलक कनिकरु
Therefore forgive me.
अंदिके ननु क्षम
Punishment for you and forgiveness for me.
प्रवाह सिक्षण नी उपंद कनका क्षमा
So have mercy upon me.
नाइलक कनिकरु
And the Lord looking at him said
देवड़ी तनवे चुस्त
This man
ई मनुष्य
Has been justified.
नी ईत्तमंतुगा तेच
This man
ई मनुष्य
Has been made righteous.
नी ईत्तमंतुड
This man
ई मनुष्य
Is not a sinner anymore.
इका पापी काद
He is not a sinner anymore.
इक एन्नड पापी
I have made him righteous.
नेन तनु नीत्मंतुड
It came from the mouth of the, mouth of the Lord Jesus Christ.
ई ये सुप्रो नोट उंद आस्तन
And when God calls a person righteous, he's righteous.
ओके वेला देवड़ी ए व्यक्तिनाइना नु नीत्मंतुड अनंटे नीत्मंतुड
And when God calls a person a sinner, he's a sinner.
देवड़ी ओके वेला व्यक्ति चुस नु पापी अनंटे नु पापी
What did he do?
एन जस
What did this publican do?
ई सुंकर एन
He did nothing to become a righteous person.
नीत्मंतुड काड़ा नीक तान ए कार्य
Not given one small good work he had done.
ओकम मंच सत्क्रिय कुरा तान चेल
Not, he had not done anything good.
एम मंच चेल
And still the Lord made him righteous.
आइना तनु नीत्मंतुड
That is the work of God.
अधि देवनी कार्य
That's a great work on the cross of Calvary.
आई सिलुल देवड़ी चेसन गुप्पा
That's the power of the cross.